April seventeenth. Uh commissioners meetings agenda, um Wednesday, April seventeenth, all commissioners are present. I'm gonna start with over the sound of, I'm guessing, our shredder. I'm gonna start with public comments.
They're shredding documents.
Seeing no public in attendance, I'm gonna move on to elected officials and department head updates. Doug, you're at the top of our board here, so we're gonna start with you. Anything that you need to bring up?
Uh, you want me to address the disposal of assets with the firearms now or later?
I do on the agenda.
No, then I'll just briefly say something really positive about staffing. We are four months today with zero voluntary resignations from any corrections officers.
We know you could do it.
Great, well done.
Well, no. Question we debated some, you can't solve everything with money, and I understand that, but it's not. It's not uncoincidental, the timing of that four month stretch with retention. And we had a forty-five to fifty percent turnover rate during two thousand twenty-three. So clearly, we're way out ahead on a much better pace.
You knock on wood, you talk, you knock on wood when you say this stuff, right?
No, I stopped doing that because I refuse, there's too many things like that to be superstitious about. My knuckles were starting to hurt, and I don't think it does any good, so I stubbornly refuse.
All right, I don't think there's actually any. There you go, it's death, baby. All right, I'm gonna move on to Doug all said. Kim, do you have anything for us today?
I do, and it's actually on Doug's behalf. I need to request a non-FMLA leave of absence for one of our brand-new COs. He had an accident at home and actually suffered a torn bicep muscle from shoveling snow. He's only been with us just under a month and is gonna be able to come back on light duty, which Doug has indicated he'll be able to accommodate because he's not off training yet. But we wanna do what we can to keep him because we believe he's going to be a valuable officer in the long run.
How much time does he need?
Um, Doug, do you have a better idea than I do?
We're getting an updated, uh, he has a doctor's appointment today, so I would expect an updated medical report after, within a day or two. It's a question of the light duty and how long he'll need that. The injury, it could be a couple of months based on, we had another officer that had a, actually, a little bit more severe full tear, and he was on light duty for about two months. So I don't know exactly, should be less than that, and we can keep training him. We, we think through almost all aspects of training, there are probably a couple of things that are physical that will have to postpone the training a bit. But he could be back as early as, you know, could be cleared today essentially for light duty.
Anyway, I said move. What sort of activities do they do in light duty at your house?
Uh, because, well, they basically are, he would be moving into his second week of what we call field training. So they're shadowing their, their field training officer, going through the routine day. The thing that we absolutely have never allowed because they're not trained yet is any physical interventions, no, no involvement in codes. So there's no risk, and he is gonna be, we expect able to walk, no issue, it's again a bicep. So, you know, it's interacting with inmates still, doing a lot of normal tasks, helping, observing. What he wouldn't be able to do is any training that say involved, uh, like restraint training, or if we were doing defensive tactics training in that next six weeks, he would have to sit that out and we would have to, uh, reschedule that once he was cleared from, from light duty.
This is probably the best time if he's gonna hurt himself, yeah, but you know, a second motion, a second.
He will undoubtedly be in a, in a slave for his arm, so that he'll be unable to extend the arm, and it will be obvious to people around him that, that he is someone.
Yeah, yes.
Does that create any problems when inmates have reached the same conclusion? That he is impaired and unable to respond like others? You know what I mean?
No, not, I don't think so. You mean whether they might target him because they see a vulnerability?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I guess you could speculate that could happen, but I'm not sure it's any more likely than any other officer they may perceive to have a weakness or an officer who's new and in training, and they try to verbally manipulate them. But he's literally not making independent decisions either, like he's, you know, not writing disciplinaries independently or setting limits on inmates verbally. They'd have to be, yeah, it's, they'd have to be an inmate that had some extreme vendetta to physically attack him because he has a sling. And he's not likely to provoke that in an inmate because they don't know him, and he's not somebody that's, you know, had to say recently write a disciplinary on an inmate where the inmate's resentful about that, so I think it's, it, it's safe and within the light duty parameters, we expect, but we have to see the report officially from the doctor before we could make a final decision.
All right, so the motion has been made, the second all in favor, I, I. There you go, okay.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Eli.
Um, I have something on the agenda that I have one important on.
Okay, so nothing else?
Nothing.
Okay, Chad, you have an update?
I do, good morning, everyone. Uh, so we have a new deputy chief of operations down at EMS. We, after the assessment with MRI and, um, the interview process last Friday, Ed Atkins came out on top and is our new deputy chief of operations. His day-to-day duties will include oversight of all the captains and the day-to-day shifts. Uh, he is starting that, he started that this week and is moving forward with other aspects of training and the like. Uh, we also have through our community liaison that started with the grant last year, um, along with our training, we've kind of moved that into, our deputy of clerical services, Mark Kramer, for the training requirements, and he's done a fantastic job with all that, and we've also moved Sarah Cannell into that community outreach for the community education requirement for the grant, which all of those have been met. But we've also, with Sarah's help, she's got twelve different events as far as community outreach and education set up in the coming months, um, starting Thursday with a touch of truck at the Jack and Jill daycare just down the street from our base in Swansea. So we're moving forward, we've got a strong, uh, leadership team in place now and just pushing that needle forward more and more.
What's the staffing, uh, status?
Staffing, uh, we're solid, but I've asked him to open up a little, the hiring again just to see if we get any more applicants. I would like another full-time medic for sure, and a couple more EMTs. We're probably not going to have, uh, one EMT make it through our orientation process, and that discussion is gonna happen tomorrow and we'll move on from there. He's just not responsive to training, that's the main issue.
And, uh, either Kim or Richard, give me an idea what the numbers are, that what Kim used to report out.
Our current numbers are, uh, we have twenty-four assigned to shifts. That's the mix of our paramedics, AEMTs and EMTs, and we have a total of, uh, five per diems along with three full-time floats, which pick up certain days throughout the week for full-time.
Can you just start that over? We've got some noise in the background, so it was tough to get the.
I apologize, I'm gonna go on for a while.
Well, we turned on the volume.
So, Jack, we have twenty-four assigned to the, throughout the four different shifts, full-time, permanently. And we have four full-time float employees that have set schedules to bolster the, uh, certain days along with, uh, five or s- five per diems that pick up shifts regularly. So our staffing's solid, and it's just getting better. We, we may have, like I said, one EMT that's not gonna make it through our orientation process. He just hasn't been responsive to, uh, instruction and, and how the operation moves along, but, uh, the deputies and I are gonna have that conversation with him tomorrow.
And can you tell us anything about the, the number of runs, uh, either nine-one-one or interfacility? We, we used to get some sort of periodic update on the number of runs per day or whatever, that sort of volume thing.
Um, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, Jack, I apologize. I will have that next time I come before you. But we're pretty steady.
Just shoot something to me and I'll shoot it after that.
Okay, I'll get that done.
Thank you. The, um, and the shift numbers are, by May first, we'll have a, a normalization of shift personnel?
We will, uh, since.
And I was gonna say, right now, we, we gave people, there was a few people that needed to be moved around to equal shifts. Okay, and we gave them some time before that, before that change occurs, and May first is, I think, that day.
It is, Chris.
So are we, are we still under a kind of a, um, a twenty-four hour, uh, rotation or something? What's, what's our?
Twenty-four hours.
Yes, they work, they work twenty-four hour shifts, and the shifts rotate, so it's not like you have a set day that you just work your twenty-four hour shift. Um, that will potentially change depending on how things go with the union and what the employees want. But we're still on that, and it, so you have one day on, you're off for two days, another twenty-four hour shift, and then you're off for four days.
So that's still built in the, uh, like you did overtime?
It does.
Okay. Great, so that's good news. Oh, oh, I, I was a little confused. Are we, are we, uh, did we transition from an assistant chief to deputy chiefs?
We did.
Do we have two deputies?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And, um, we also had one of the candidates that was, um, that went for the deputy chief's position is on edge shift, and so he'll be taking on that captain's position on an interim basis, like everybody else, you know, like the, the chief themselves. And so, um, then we'll just take a look at how things are going and moving forward there. So, and I, and I, uh, yeah, I think everything else is all come good.
So do we, do we, do we still have a policy that, regardless of administrative role, someone will always spend some time in a bus, we went stuff?
Oh, yes, the, the captains are, are still riding the, the ambulances, and both deputies, if needed, can jump, jump on and go run last out or help out as needed. And myself.
And I've asked chief to reach out to, there's been a lot of movement in reference to, uh, chiefs, uh, fire chiefs in the, in the region. We have in Swansea, uh, Eric Mattson's title was, uh, intern title was taken off, and he's now the chief, we're excited for that, norm. I guess he's back, um, as the deputy chief along with, yeah, along with, um, uh, Mike Burke, who was a keen firefighter for many years, I know Mike well. Um, and so that, so we wanna reach out and get them to get familiar with us too. And then, um, in Keene, you saw in the paper, the resignation of, uh, the chief, uh, chief park ward of the, the Keene Fire Department, so we'll reach out to, uh, interim chief Martin to, you know, have, you know, to make sure that we're all, all on the same page of where things are at and, you know, how things are going, and to help that be like, so chief will be doing that in the coming days.
Yes, I already reached out to chief Mattson yesterday after I received the press release from the town administrator, uh, spoke to him, uh, especially since we've had some rather critical calls in Swansea the last few weeks. Uh, unfortunately, both of those parties didn't survive their wounds. So, uh, we've had a pretty open line of communication with Swansea and, and the chiefs there previously anyway because of those, uh, calls, and I will be reaching out to the Keene, uh, chief as well here shortly. And I also spoke to the Richmond Fire Chief yesterday morning and had a lovely conversation with him while he was working for Keene Fire.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great, uh, how about the vehicles?
Vehicles, uh, we had a issue yesterday with A3, the ambulance that we got from Walpole. Uh, it hit a, by the sounds of it, it hit a pothole and lost a hubcut, its hubcap, and sheared off a couple of, uh, the studs that hold on the, uh, tires in the rear, so that got towed to Sullivan Tire yesterday and is being fixed.
Was that pothole in Walpole also?
Uh, I don't believe so, Jerry.
Allow that.
Are you remembering that, um, if anything's over a thousand dollars, we should import it to Primax? I mean, we may still wanna weigh, okay.
Well, it's worth a shot. I mean, uh, I don't know what it's gonna cost, but it would probably be more than a thousand.
What's the deck?
Thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars?
I'll, I'll reach out to Steve and, and find out, but, um, I don't think the cost for a few stud, tire studs is gonna come up to a thousand dollars for that.
Do you, do you think the wheel is still adequate, but the?
Yes, from last report it is.
And is, who, who's doing the repair? Steve's and what, what, the Walpole?
No, uh, Sullivan Tire.
Sullivan Tire.
On Route ten.
Got it.
All right, anything else?
And, and, and how are the other, how's the red ambulance doing?
The red ambulance, uh, we have that up at Maplewood, uh, it's a tight fit, but we love the fact that, uh, we can get that one and A1 up there. Uh, we've been keeping that one local recently just to keep the miles down, cuz it's, as all the ambulances have, they've racked up the miles, uh, but so far it seems to be doing well.
I saw it last night in, uh, Westminster.
Yes, um, I actually, yeah, um, I believe they actually hit a curb last night as well. So that's being assessed and.
Don't go to Dunkin' Donuts if you're gonna hit her.
It was, well, it was like ten o'clock at night, well, at thirty maybe.
Yeah.
I, I.
I know that they were returning.
I see them frequently, uh, as I'm traveling up and down ninety-one.
The red ambulance in general or just our ambulances in general?
Usually, usually the white ones on those longer runs.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, I, yeah, I mean, it is, it is odd because, uh, like, driving to Boston a week ago, I passed them like in heading almost to the Massachusetts line, so I'm thinking, I'm going this way, they're coming this way, they're probably coming from Boston, uh, that stinks, and that just takes the bus off for a long time.
You know, this, not to, not to get too far afield, but it was quite, uh, shocking to me to read an article in the paper where the ED doc was talking about how two-thirds of the hospital beds are occupied by, what do you call, holdovers or people that are ju- trying to be discharged someplace.
Two-thirds, wow.
Of the beds in the hospital are occupied by people that don't need to be there. And where's the consequence of that is, it makes it more difficult to place people in facilities without us transporting the pathway across the country. And, uh, this, this kind of comes back to, it's our conversation about staffing and an integrated approach to finding more workers, all that other stuff.
Right, well, I mean, and, and there's some other things that when you start peeling the onion there, it's, you know, you've heard Catherine say, one of the issues with the beds is that guardianship for some individuals.
No, that's, that's, that's just bizarre, uh.
You know, it's.
We, we, I don't want that to fall off our radar.
No, there's a solution out there, yeah, we're gonna get Dr. England to be guardian.
And it's also very difficult for the hospital to be, and, uh, I will not be a guardian.
Wait, what?
I will not be a guardian.
You, you just stand back and hold on.
I have four kids and ten grandkids.
You know, they know all about it.
Yes. What I was trying to say was that, uh, one of the major difficulties for the hospital is, is from the hospital has so many patients who are waiting for this job. Nope, they do not receive any reimbursement.
I know, I know.
They're continuing to supply all of the services, nursing care, medications.
They even have to feed them.
Yes, feed them and they have to keep their rooms clean and the toilets clean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I know, it's a, uh, the, the, the financial impact is daunting, I, I just don't know, uh, we did have to find a solution to that because it's terrible.
Yeah. Um, anyway. Yeah, no, there's a lot going on, and, and especially with the hospital, I, I look forward to this conversation that's gonna be coming up, so. Um, all right, thank you, chief. If no one else, Cheryl, you don't have anything, do you?
I, I have something to present with.
Yeah. Cheryl. All right, then I'm gonna move on to scheduled items. Master agenda item number one-one-seven-one. Uh, authorization to approve vehicle lease paperwork for the sheriff from the Department of Corrections. Cheryl Trump is gonna be presenting, asking inspector both to approve the execution of the lease paperwork for three additional county vehicles. Cheryl.
Additional?
Yes, so these are.
Treats. Treat, well, they're, they're not, they're additional to what we.
No, no, no.
They're.
One. One is additional, two is?
Replacement.
Maybe.
Yeah, okay.
If whatever happens with those pending contracts.
Yeah, so basically what this is, is in the twenty-twenty-three budget, there was, um, an approval for the sheriff to get two new leases.
Okay.
Um, and the DOC to get a vehicle as well.
Oh, okay.
Our first payments are not due until twenty-twenty-four, but this, um, combines all three of them together, working with the same company, um, and so.
Who is the company?
Well, First Republic.
Do we have a, a independent leasing company, finance?
Yeah.
Lease finance?
Public, First National.
Oh, great.
Yeah, they're pretty good because they're, I guess I did, they're all, I mean, there was a window of one.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, they allow us to send them invoices for individual.
Yeah, no, I get it, I've worked with, I've worked with them up north.
Yeah, four was like all the ones filled and that.
Yeah.
So just replace three vehicles. Um, I don't, um, I think the obvious add-in, add-in part, we are replacing two, if we don't get the contract, if we get the contract, we'll have to contain the two, then we gotta replace. We need a additional, additional vehicle, but you.
Which, it's worth keeping in mind just another side that we can lease ambulance as that same way. So, I've already, I had talked to Republic three years ago at this point.
Really?
About leasing ambulance fleet, same as we lease the sheriff's, we can lease any vehicle. I mean, up in Kenan through Republic, I'm leasing a greater, a ten-wheeled or a dump truck and, and I think a backhoe, uh, so you have a seven-year lease, all the maintenance rolls in, and seven years you trade it out, flip the value into your next, and you, you, you're never operating a piece of equipment that's all in seven years, and all of your, uh, major, uh, uh, repairs are covered by the, by the halls.
Do they have a shorter? Can you repeat that part about no more than seven? No more than seven years for anybody other than Cheryl. Cheryl has to keep the ten. You, you, cuz you're still, I'll tell you, you're still gonna bump up with the mileage issue with the.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, but just, just our, our concept as we, as we head towards a fairly, I'll say, a rapid, uh, vehicle replacement, uh, plan for the end, since it's all going at the same time.
Right. I'm sorry, interrupted.
So essentially, uh, the, the documents, um, need, uh, a motion that authorizes, and Putin authorizes, Chris, to execute and deliver, um, this lease on behalf of.
So. Bob. You want a second?
Second. Excuse me. Commissioner Wasmak?
I.
Commissioner Engdahl?
I.
And Commissioner Clark, yes.
I just had one question, I wanna make sure. The original plan on the capital budget we were gonna purchase, and it was gonna be a different vehicle, it was gonna be a Dodge Charger. We ended up linking up with Eli on the lease, and I think that's for an Explorer. The total cost of the Explorer is more than was approved on the budget, but since we're leasing it, that's not an issue in, you know, terms of the distribution of the monies.
And what you mean is it was more, uh, it's gonna be more over three years is what you mean?
Exactly, more over three years, but certainly less in two thousand, in this year's budget than the, I think, original number was thirty-four something, thirty-four thousand something, but that was a purchase number, one-time expense in twenty-four, whereas now we're on a, a lease over three years.
So it's spreading the cost, it's actually, um, and the reason why it's more expensive is the interest, unfortunately.
What?
The interest, cuz the, I mean, interest on stuff right now is only seven percent.
Wow.
So I think it's like sixteen or seventeen that it needs to allocate every year. Even through the public plan, I mean. Yeah, you got five points on. Or they don't get the margin back each month, so we're releasing.
Oh.
So we, we just paying for the whole entire cost of the car for three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're paying an amount each year, it's like seventy-six thousand, but that's for all three of them. So, there's another schedule that brings down maybe a little amount.
So you're, you're comfortable that the, uh, cost of the lease can be appropriated amount, notwithstanding that being different is still okay? I mean, we're spending more for a car than what was appropriate, right?
That's, but, that's not how it, that's not how it actually worked out, the, um.
If, if you're fine with that, I'm fine.
Yeah, all we gotta do is we gotta, since we're not paying anything this year, when we come before next year, we gotta make sure that we adjust what the payment is, as for capital payment.
Remember, uh, Charger, the Charger, they just continued, right?
Well, the Charger, this continued patrol model.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one, that was the main reason we, we switched, but I, I, I think Eli said it in, for the twenty-five budget, we'll need to readjust our capital requests based on this, this plan.
Leases are always more expensive than an outright purchase.
No, no, I know.
So we did elaborate the fact that we were going to lease versus expense and that the payments wouldn't be due until twenty-two. So we did elaborate the fact that we were going to lease versus expense and that the payments wouldn't be due until twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty five.
Alrighty. So we had the motion pass, so, right?
Uh, I'll take to say I. Oh, no, the I ten.
Alright. UNH Parked Extension is next. They're not here yet, so I'll just move on. Uh, master agenda items number one, one, seven, three, town meeting scheduled and discussion. Um, acting expected to discuss a plan for meetings with town select boards to discuss the county and local issue. My goal is by the end, by uh the end of June to have visited at least eight. Of our, our, our county, our towns in the county, um, and then get through the summer. And then between September and October, uh, try to get in another eighth, nine. Um, and just get them out there. There's new select boards that a lot of them have had, you know, elections, they changed the select boards. And I think we should talk about what we've been doing within the budget and, and I mean, I don't think. I don't think that people understand it or aware of it, but I also think that they don't. They don't truly under, they may not understand the full breadth of what we do every single day for the county to start telling a story that way. It's just. Part of, of, of what we're, we're trying to do here. We can also alert them that. There'll be um podcasts that will directly have the department head, you know, talking about their departments, like Eli will. Come on and he'll talk about the sheriff's department and the sheriff's dispatch and what they do and. And, and responsibility. So people start to get an idea of instance. So we're tackling it from different, different sides, but I wanna make you aware of it. We'll have the list out by next week, but we have a deep town that we are looking at to see if we can set them up now. And anyone will be invited, especially the person that represents that community currently, but anybody would be invited to.
So they're gonna be on their regular select board agenda.
We're gonna see if we can get that, like with Marlboro has meetings on, on um. Tuesdays. Thursdays at ten and, and Ericville has meetings at, on Fridays. They have them also at nighttime, but they have one that's on. Uh, Fridays at, at, I think, ten or nine thirty.
So we'll have to be mindful of. Shaping the message.
Correct.
To stay within.
The timeframe that we have.
Timeframe, and I don't like that timeframe. They're never gonna give you more than twenty minutes.
Right, and, and, you know, first and foremost is the, is the budget and where we are with the numbers, have them understand.
So you're gonna have some sort of handout.
Yes.
The summary sort of thing you're talking.
Yeah. So that's what we're working on.
Well, then you know that, that public uh brief that we, that we came up with last year. Could be, you know, they use that in a format, remember? It was sort of a summary.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 we've got a, we've got an idea about something that we wanna put together too.
We'll bring him an annual report too.
Well, we bring, we have a report. So.
But that's probably an under-read historic document that actually goes into great length that they really have interest.
Right, so I just wanna see if we can do that. So I just wanna make you aware. So.
So you're gonna want? A majority of us of these are just the representative.
I would welcome all, but it definitely would wanna have the person that represents that, 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 that committee.
And so. For those of us that might not be running again. Maybe you'd quite help.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we wanna be careful not to, not to create campaign events, you know? They're not, they're not campaigning till they sign up. They're mere citizens. Human beings.
Alright. Okay, so UNH Parked Extension will be put off a week until next week. Uh, do they know where it's at?
Um, I told them that they can do Zoom as well.
Uh, unless next week is in Florida, I won't be there.
Next week is in Maplewood. No, I don't think. And just since we're talking about it right now, I will say that next week is the QAIC meeting at Maplewood, so it's a nine thirty start.
You can spend the night on that.
Master agenda item number one, one, seven, four, disposal firearms. Yon's here to speak to it. Yeah, uh, Axon Spect to discuss the process and procedure of disposal of county asset. He's got some, he's got some blocks that you, they're moving away from and wants to talk about. Adam forward with that. Uh, he's got some thoughts to it, so it's yours.
Yeah, so the context is a reminder is we switched, we are switching over this year from. Uh Glock. Uh, twenty-two to seventeen. And um, I don't know, is Eli still there?
I'm here.
He is.
Uh, do you, so?
They may need his support.
I don't know if you. Uh, how you replace um or sell back any firearms if you have done that, but. Under the county asset policy, when we put something out for sale, it needs to be public, competitive bid, and I don't think that. Makes sense for firearms. We can sell them back to the manufacturer for two seventy-five per, per gun. Um, and that comes to about thirty-three hundred dollars. Um, I just wanted to make sure I'm not violating county policy if we don't put that out publicly or.
But we wanted.
We may need a, a special policy for firearms.
What's the difference between the twenty-two and the seventeen and why are we doing it anyway, given the amount of use they get, I guess? Tell me what the.
The main reasons we're doing it were, it's a forty millimeter versus nine millimeter. There's uh, it's easier to qualify with a nine millimeter. Uh, we wanna keep our transport team numbers up as much as possible, especially with the number of transports. We're needing and seeing these days. Uh, the ammunition costs less ultimately. So in, in the transition, over time, it's gonna not ultimately be a, it's not really gonna cost us more. We have twelve of them and we go through a standard replacement anyway. We just wanna convert over and that's. What I presented as part of the capital budget. Um, and those were the, the reasons behind it.
Just, just from a knowledge point of view, why, the only. Use, I suppose, is all the practice rounds for qualifications.
Yeah, yeah, tr- training, qualifications, certi- certifying the officers in training and qualifying. And yeah, we hope that's the only use they, they get.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, we have the forty-five, we have the nine millimeter and the reason ones are smaller around because. Fits better in the hand and, and, and right now the rounds can do just about anything of our, of our larger caliber. So when we train, when we um convert, we do, we do, we trade in our guns for a newer model. So we get a, they buy them, basically they take a trade in, we pay a little more.
And you, you guys have the seventeen or the? So what do, what do you want?
Uh, we aren't in a trading back the same gun process. We're looking at. Um, selling them back at two seventy-five per gun. Um. All twelve of them and because we're gonna fully con- convert over.
What, what happens to the ammo that we've already had purchased?
Well, we're, we're talking with Winchester. They have some ammo that we may swap out. Um, but basically, I don't, unless, we, we, we would. Pretty much donate it, but there is a possibility we'll work something out with, with Winchester. Um.
I don't have a problem donating, that's just a question.
What do the new guns cost, just out of curiosity?
Um, I don't know, probably close to four hundred. Four and five, you think, Eli? Yeah.
So that's so, so then uh. They sell these, they resell these guns as refurbished or something?
Yeah, there is another option. I just wanna put it out. Um, Laslow Bogar is a. Federal fi- firearms licensed dealer. We could make, we could sell these through his official status to officers. That are interested in owning them privately for that same cost.
I'll, I'll take the, the, I just wanna, I'm not to jump in. The process that we do, when we want to have, cause I personally buy every gun that I've ever. Used in law enforcement. So what happens is I, we would trade in our gun into the, you know, with the. Fever.
Right.
And then they will in turn resell it to us. So it goes through them and then if I wanna keep that gun, I just, alright, just send me a check for this much money.
Yeah.
And you, you, you just will keep it. So it, it keeps the, the county out of it because I'm going to.
Well, that's why, that's why I like the idea, you can only back to the company and go from there.
And then we, and we done, we've probably, probably done two exchanges of guns since I've been here.
Yeah. That is a, another option that would be cleaner, that we could sell them back to the. I forget where they come, uh, somewhere in Massachusetts and then officers could purchase from the, the company at that price. And so it sounds like you've done that, Eli, and it sounds like. That's how you'd rather I, uh, we do that than try to involve Bogar as a licensed dealer. Keep, keep it cleaner.
Yes. I, I, I'd rather not, um. I'd rather not appear as though the county is flooding the streets with used guns. I think there's enough out there, so. What the company does with them, what individuals do, I, I just. Just reluctant to add to the number of guns.
Yeah, I was just, I was, I was gonna.
I do, I just buy it because I don't want no one else using it.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah. I mean, people wanna buy guns, gonna buy guns, but I don't wanna appear to be.
Well, I'm still stuck on, I'm still stuck on the reason. I mean, these are functional weapons and.
Well, there's improvements to the weapons and the safety mechanism. You know, they, they're getting better with the ammunition. Sometimes you gotta, we carry forty-five before because of firepower. Now you can carry a nine, has the same firepower because of the ammunition is better. It's a more easier gun to qualify, um, and, 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 and you know, and fits in your hand better.
Why, why is it easier to qualify? Just, again, I just don't.
The recoil is. And it fits better in your hand, you have a better grip.
Okay, okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah. Did you go, did you go from a Glock, a Glock to a Beretta?
No, we went from forty-five clocks to nine millimeter clocks.
Okay. Some of these on Beretta was in my head.
Well, I think it's important to be able to get the target. I mean, as you know, under stress, it is profoundly difficult to hit your target.
And we're right now testing a different firearm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm. Direction you'd like me to take unless anyone had any other concerns or questions.
So, so we've settled with uh the buyback.
Buyback to the company.
Yeah, what they do with them, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, got it.
But that's where I was, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
So, well. So is that separate from our regular asset policy or is that?
Well, we're not really disposing, just trading it in.
It is, I mean, it is, I mean. I, I guess, I mean, probably if you were, if you were in the process of just trading them in as part of purchasing things, that wouldn't even come before you, but.
Right.
You're not trading them in because trading in would be going towards the new company and you're not dealing with, trading them into the new company. There is a policy that requires anything with value over three hundred dollars. So technically he probably. Individually, they are under the value of, were under three hundred, but I think the sensitivity of the fact that he was trying to figure out what to do with. Guns.
Right, right.
Um, and, and furthermore, the aggregate is over three hundred, so.
Well, I.
I think it made sense for him to bring it for you to.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I think it's a good idea, I think. And I, and I, and I, I would certainly support waiving a public bidding process on weapons.
Yeah.
And you're using the company from Massachusetts, they already have a, a contract that they would state.
Right, but, but, but what I, what I'm suggesting, I think Terry, I think you can all agree. Is not to have to advertise in a newspaper, the highest interest of used weapons to flood the streets with more pistols.
Right.
And to appear to be the purveyor of weaponry.
I think the.
And so, because that would be otherwise required by.
I think it's a simple fact that just returning to the company, we go like this. And we move on and what they do with the weapons is what they do with the weapons.
If we trade, what happens if you trade them.
Can there be a motion for this, just that you're? Uh, yeah, I just asked her.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the motion would be to add to the county. Disposal of assets. So. And the requirement for. That weapons be excluded from the disposal. Correct, on a matter of principle. That we don't wanna plug for other guns.
Weapons slash firearms or just.
I guess so, firearms. We can donate. All the communities. You know, the bulk of the ammunition is practice, right? Because that's the bulk of the activity and the guns that we use. And my recollection is we would buy literally like four times as many practice rounds as real, as live rounds. Be- because everybody, you've got twelve people that are qualified, it, it takes, you go through a lot of those grit bullets in order to call these. Right, uh, and then you have your, your repository live ammunition for the twelve that's added.
Your point is, 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 is so true. I mean, when, uh, when former chief, uh, Pasta was alive. Uh, I remember having a conversation with him about weapons being fired by, by police officers that. Majority of the police officers never, and he said probably a strong majority, never. Fire them. They may draw their gun, but they don't fire their gun on, in the, where they fire it is in practice.
Sure.
It's just, you know, the si- situation that it calls for firing of a weapon comes very, very frequently.
Well, Eli's probably a good example, right?
Once in my life. On a portable sized kidney scrubs and thivers and.
The line of duty was a thing on Marlboro Street.
Yeah.
Fifteen years ago.
April, oh, um, twelve years today, April seventeen.
Twelve years today, yeah. So, and you spent thirty, you spent thirty years on the, what was the, was there?
No, that was a, a past year with KPD.
Yeah.
Yeah, in twenty twelve.
And, and how long you on KPD?
Uh, twenty-two.
Twenty-two years, so twenty-two years he shot.
No, he's not with us today, I was.
Yeah, I remember when that happened. I was pissed at you for that.
Well, why?
Why did he miss?
Because I, cause I let him run me over?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Chris, he tried to kill him with his car.
Oh, no, I know, I thought.
Dude, man, you just freaking got me chilled.
No, 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 I thought that this guy was, was. Driving down Marlboro Street on his way out.
You have to try to kill Eli.
Well, he began to pursue that went from that, uh. Uh, where Blackwater used to be, where that Apple store used to be, right?
Okay.
Down Island Street.
Yeah.
Down Winchester Street, one-on-one, optical lab, and optical app, he lost control and. Who was front tire, one of his tires, optical app of Marlboro Street and his car stalled. Optical app of Marlboro Street and his car stalled. No, we blocked him in and he was driving right at me.
You tell us that.
Well, everybody knew that, Terry.
Everybody knew that.
I was on the city council and they were telling us about the incident.
That's because you never on city council get the truth.
Really, I apologize.
Sorry to break it up.
Doing that freaking on the, on the day it happened.
I know, it literally. That's what he was just saying.
Wow, we. Remember that.
Eight, no, it was just before night shift came on.
Wow, so like ten minutes.
What, what was your position at the time?
Ten minutes you would have.
What was your position at the time?
I was looking, the, the shift commander.
So ten more minutes you would have been.
And he got out of his car and he ran like Belmont Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Back and, and I put my car in front of it and, and Neil, I'm tearing up. And Neil got back in his car. And as I'm crossing all these. Lammro, I opened up. And I couldn't get out of the way because my door was open. When I backed off, I hit the door. But because he had a bad tire, tire stirred the car away from, from me.
Right.
But all I see is freaking smoke and headlights coming in.
Wow. Well, happy anniversary.
This one's PTSD.
Yeah, no, kidding. I don't know why they didn't tell you that.
I'm, no, I'm sorry, they didn't tell us yet.
Spence, it was seven weeks at home while they did the investigation. It's four months before the three of us can actually even talk and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Before we can put it on and tell everybody what happened. Corrigan never saw me in front of the car, I never saw Corrigan trying to get into the car. And Lammro saw just. A man dealing with headlights, like, if I don't shoot him, he's gonna die.
Yeah, you, 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 you get that tunnel vision and that's it, that's all you're supposed to see, really. Wow. Thank you, Sheriff, for sharing that. Um, all right, my report. All right, so are we clear on the exception for the disposal?
Where, where, I, I, I feel like, there was a motion that.
To exempt.
I'm not sure what we're exempting.
With firearms.
Fire, firearms.
Disposal of firearms.
From the public.
So in other words, you want that added to the policy.
Well, if that helps you guys, then, then we would not want to be going forward. Uh, raising the issue of disposing of firearms in the way that we dispose of other county assets. Right, so this would be an exception. In whatever way you wanna word it, if that's helpful.
And I don't know, I mean, I, you always have the right in any. Um, public bid to waive that, 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 that it's not gonna go public. So I think, um.
But I mean, we have, I mean, this would, would conclude us having to wait each, every, every time.
Well, you, you, you guys think about it, whatever, whatever way it works.
But precluding it, but then, then what, that you want then firearms, what to be traded back into the, I think. The original manufacturer, whether it's a trade-in or a buyback.
I don't, I don't think we wanna go that far.
Yeah, so I don't know necessarily the.
We'll just do it as it comes.
Sale of county property, I don't think it needs to be in that policy.
I agree, that's fine. That's fine.
Speaking of bespoke, I'm, I'm probably amazed at the amount of paper which, which has been disposed of in the last hour.
Recycled.
Well, it gets now quiet.
Well, they only do it every six months or so.
About every year, so basically what has happened is we go down every, uh, we go down to the basement annually. And take out the gear that we can then get rid of. On top of that, we had another department, the drug court, that has a lot of confidential stuff that I had asked about. Getting, um, rid of a lot of their stuff, so we incorporated, we had Mike Moses bring your stuff over, so it's here. And, you know, essentially, even though it's shredded, it's also recycled, which is good.
So, so downstairs is a repository for all of the department's old stuff.
Um, we have, uh, so the county attorney's office has an area, I think the sheriff's department has an area down there. And then the firearms department has an area. Um, fortunately. There's a, there, there's a rule that essentially requires us to keep personnel files indefinitely. I mean, it's either so many years past retirement, I mean, so, but, um, with now. Um, HR's project of getting everything scanned. Our concern that we were gonna end up growing out of space will eventually go away, it's a slow process, a very slow process. We're gonna retain, we're gonna retain the scanning, there, there, we don't have to retain the hard copy. That we just need to be able to provide to, um, the New Hampshire Retirement System documentation.
Yeah.
Of historical contributions, so. So you're thinking the hard copy has to be retained?
Well, it's like the personal files, it's like plus fifty after they leave.
Yeah.
And then like.
And so we're retaining it.
Also retaining the hard.
No, we're not retaining the hard copy, we're retaining their personnel files, we're just not, we can print, we can print them off, we can create them to be part of again.
But then you wanna have any. Anything that.
But what, what, I mean.
No, I'm just, where it only matter original signatures.
No, I, I don't know.
I remember we had this discussion about keeping the records for so long and they were piling up and.
A digital copy, a digital copy is, is perfectly acceptable in terms of personnel files.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Honestly, you almost wonder from a data point of view. Analytics point of view. How many times? Retirement system has to delve into personnel records from somebody that quit literally ten or twenty years ago.
Probably ever.
And I, my bet the answer is virtually zero.
And, yeah.
And, and you almost wonder if that doesn't then warrant a change in the statute.
I would agree.
Uh, because this affects the record keeping of hundreds and hundreds of victims. Tens of thousands of people. And for no useful purpose, really. Statistic.
Yeah.
No useful purpose.
Cause we reached out to the New Hampshire Municipal Association and say, what the, what the fuck, and they said the background is all, um, by, all by. Retirement system. And there are so many of our employees that don't even participate in the retirement system.
So you almost wonder if you, you could gradually, if you can't do it all at once. Try to eliminate or make it normal with other record retention, things of seven years or ten or whatever it is. Um, and failing that, at least peel it back by a decade or two.
You know, essentially what we're doing is they're forcing us to keep track of their message books.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, we have, we really have to, now you talk about, we have to probably add some of those mobile. Filing cabinets that you slide, whatever, because. We have to keep, we gotta keep arrest records, investigations for a very long time, we're running out of space downstairs too.
Yeah, what if.
Eventually, when we get ours cleared out, we can have some of our ones that.
Oh, you have those sliding one thing?
We have those big, so we got them from the county attorney's office.
Okay.
And that's where we have been storing our personnel records, but I, I don't see when this project's gonna end. It's, it's, it's very slow.
Yeah, cause you gotta put them one by one.
Yeah, Desiree is handling the ones that are current, so she's basically, we're not adding to it.
Yeah, I think we, we, we do it that way. We, we, we talked to Lucy Weber or somebody about changing the statute. And then you chop off the other end of that. And introduce it next year.
For personnel, just give it back to our employee, let them keep it.
That's not the law.
You know, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Well, that might be a compromise that you offer to the employee or, or you get to dispose of it, they don't wanna, just like you do.
Well, that's what our policy used to be, it was honestly this sheriff that pointed out, we're not supposed to be getting rid of them. We, we were getting rid of them after seven years with the caveat that the employee had the opportunity to ask for their record. And that was in our policy book that. We're gonna destroy it, but you have the right to come forward and ask us for.
I, I think. I think we ought to just give it to them and tell them they can do whatever they want with it.
But we can, now that we've identified that there is a.
No, no, I'm saying that, that, that. Yeah, either shorten it or dispose of it by, 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 by giving it to the, to, to the employee. And they can do whatever they want with it, if they don't want it, throw it away. But.
They're the only one that's gonna need it in twenty years in.
I know, cause, I know. Well, of course, our liability is tied to that assessment for which the record would be needed arguably by retirement, because our match is always gonna be in there. So if they recalculate that. Um, and there's gonna be an equal, but there's gonna be a liability on both sides. The, the employee might get less, but the employer might have to borrow more if their calculation is wrong, right?
But as you said, I want to have.
Well, that's the exact point.
I mean, we're getting to the point too that. Are, the, the, the staff that are actually gonna retire with a pension that.
Yeah.
If you kind of coincide with what we've got on hand. Is there.
Fifty percent of our, fifty percent of our former employees will never reach a vesting point anyway.
Right, and the majority of the files that we, we've got on, on hand, they've already left and they've already taken their money back out of the retirement system. If they ever contributed, or they were part-time and never did contribute, so if there is just kind of, I would say, probably. You know, a certain number, a, a very small percentage of employees that the records that we're sitting there retaining. Have any potential need of the New Hampshire Retirement System if they were struggling to piece together people's credible years of coverage.
It, it might be a conversation with somebody for retirement, when we have nothing better to do. About whether they would support some of that, cause, you know, if they come out against it. We ought to be able to find a compromise before we draft. Legislation and it'd be easier going forward if there was some agreement on, on, on modifying the law. Or where that information would live for the next fifty years.
Or even to find out who is vested, and let us know who needs.
Right. Right.
Um, because the, the, the way it's written, it's almost. You can't have a culling, it, like, you can't. Keep track of.
It, it's so broad, it just captures everything, even though nobody's thought about the logic of that or the need for it. And that's what makes it objectionable, there's no basis for it. Other than, uh, just in case.
And you are right, I can, I can think of only two times when I was on the, the New Hampshire Retirement System. That we had to do a, a, a search that, that they talked to us about where they had to go back.
And I never experienced it, my four or five years on the board.
We, we have it every once in a great while, but it's not so much that we even have to go to the files, I mean, sometimes we do, we're going back and trying to. Find the changes statuses, but they're always current employees and it's not very often employees that have already left. It's ones that are with us that have now started their process of retirement. You know, like Brenda Howard and stuff like that, you know, her going back from Purdian to Cal, on staff to Deuce, and it was like just having to piece together. Some of the convoluted, and they were just kind of double checking it, they kept seeing dropping off of.
Right.
But it's very far between.
Yeah. I agree, you know, it's, yeah. I do it.
Okay.
It's another day.
So, um, your wish, I can do my report, or we can go and do a, a non-public. Okay, so I, I need a motion to go into non-public investments to, uh, it would be RSA ninety-one A, uh, ninety-one dash eight-three. Colon, and colon three, and, uh, dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee. Or disbanding such employer or the investigation that charges against her unless the employee affected has a right to public meaning. And to request that the meaning be open days. Um, Kim can, Kim can, uh, we can stay because.
I vote I.
Um, so Eli. And I, just tell me when, when we're in non-public and we're recording and stop.
As a result of deliberations and non-public session, no decision, recent votes taken.
Alright.
And we received an update from the sheriff's department on the status of personnel hiring.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we can move on. Um, well, if, if the sheriff was here, I would have recognized that this week is dispatch week. Um, and, uh.
Who authorized that?
Uh, just a thing.
Hallmark.
Week and we wanna just acknowledge and thank the, uh, dispatch team for the work they do. We're a critical piece to many crisis situations, their calming voice leads them. Leads those people that are in crisis through, uh, through those moments and times, and we also wanna recognize, so the sheriff's dispatch, but also stuff with. Uh, Fire Mutual Aid, because they do a great job for us too with, with what they're, the work they're doing.
Right, I know this, 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 uh, it, it is pretty interesting, Sheriff's Dispatch, because they monitor everybody that's in the field that's actually connected with them. And every time they dispatch a call. They follow up, they're saying, person on the phone to check in with them, and the system actually gives them an, uh, an indicator that says, you know. Uh, and one eighty-one. It, it's on a traffic stop and, and thirty seconds has gone by, and so they radio out there, so just checking their status. Uh, so they don't let anybody go, uh, who's on a call without checking in on a, on a, a scheduled basis. Uh, controlled by their computer system to make sure that it's okay.
So, so when an officer some stops someone for speeding and going through a stop sign.
Yeah.
Um, the dispatcher is notified.
Absolutely. At the, at, before the stop, before he gets out of the vehicle, he gets out of the vehicle. And they call dispatch and say, we've got a twenty-one or twenty-two, one of them stopped, they tell them where they are. At the Home Depot at, you know, Abercrombie Lane, uh, out in the Hampshire, eighty-five to six-two. Uh, green Chevy, and they gotta run the plate before you approach the vehicle. Make sure there's no walks or horns out there.
That's why there's sometimes they're shitting the car for a bit.
Yeah.
Cause they go through all that process.
And then they, then they go get the license and come back and maybe run the record of the, of the person, but. The, but, so from the moment that they're, that they're, that they pull over. A dispatcher knows who they've got, what they're doing, and where they are. And then they follow up, uh, if they don't get back in a few minutes, they say. How is everything? Just checking your status. And, and they see the clear, you know, ten, seven, nine, or, uh, under control or something of that sort.
Very interesting.
Yeah, every single call for all the communities that they serve. So they got all this stuff on a computer screen, uh, and they're getting these indicators down here that says, you know. Bob just pulled somebody over, we have heard from them about ten seconds, fifteen seconds, whatever the intercourse. Uh, so they get a beep, says you better, you better take in, make sure they go right. Um, it's pretty, it actually is a, a lot of, uh, directed attention to, 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 to what's going on.
Can the officer do that without going back to the police car? Can, can he do it from his radio?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he doesn't have to go back to the police car?
Um, he does, most of the time the status checks, they're out with the person or whatever, so they're just. And, and if they don't, they don't hear from the person, then they'll call a different, the police agents to get in. To check on. So they might say, I've got all the two people on the phone, and they're trying to check the status, and they don't hear anything. They'll have somebody from Wechester. Or. Or Chester. Slide that way to make sure.
With a siren alarm?
No, well, no, not the siren. But, but the, the, that's all kind of coordinated, managed by the dispatcher, that's impressively here. And fire, they do the same thing, particularly if there's firemen inside a burning house, they do what's called a hard badge. So every, it's like every ten minutes, they're doing a part check, checking with the commander to see. Have you accounted for everybody that's in the building? If five people are in, you know, with those five people are, are those five people out. And, uh, that sort of thing, so, yeah, a lot of monitoring, whatnot.
Okay, I think I keep on moving, NHAC Friday. Um.
Um.
And Primex.
I will not be going. We're going down to New York City for the weekend, so.
Oh, wonderful.
I will not be a damn.
Do you need Broadway?
Uh, we're going to an apple hill concert.
That, in New York City?
Yes.
Same, you know, you could just do that up from rocks.
You know, you could just do that up from Roxbury, right?
We were at Apple Hill at night.
No, we're trying to feed.
Apple Hill is is our middle name.
Where you stand?
With my brother.
Oh, okay, oh, cool.
Great.
That's a, yeah, it's a lovely.
Yes. There's a lot of history.
Yes, you know, and the nicest part of New York City with western.
Uh, tonight, uh, Commissioner Clark and I will be attending the Manana Economic Development Corporation's annual meeting. And uh, sitting there and hearing what Cody's been doing. There's a lot of good stuff that he's been doing. He will be, he'll be here talking to you all in June, uh, just giving you an update where things stand, but there is, you know, from. From childcare, some of the grant monies, they've been able to, in partnership they've done with the children, uh, Chester Children's Center. Uh, museum money, um, and what they're doing, work around that and other things throughout, so. Uh, we'll be there uh, next week. Davis said is uh, compliance of seven to nine thirty start time for next week. Um, I'll be there for four twenty five, yeah, I know. Four twenty five, which is next week, at six o'clock is the volunteer dinner. Uh, at uh. Maybe it's so.
I won't be there for that.
Yeah, if you're able to schedule that into your your day, that would be outstanding.
What day of the week is that?
Uh.
It's Thursday.
Thursday, it's usually, and I know what they's prime rib, it's stuffed chicken breasts, it's always a good a good eat. So. And we take the time for those individuals to go up there, volunteer their time and recognize them. It's always just a a great thing. Six P M.
It it's a nice time.
Second, yeah, actually, I apologize. Um, time it is, I don't know why I put that six, it is four thirty to six thirty.
Okay.
So four thirty to six thirty, um. And yeah, prime mix up, uh, chicken, vegetable medley, garlic, mashed potatoes, crusty dinner rolls, Caesar salad. Well, crusty's dinner roll just sounds wrong, like they left them out for too long.
They overcooked it.
What what date is that?
That's Thursday the twenty fifth, starting at four thirty.
I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you'd be at Maplewood two days.
It's four twenty four. I don't know how I, it's four twenty four.
Four twenty four in the afternoon?
It Wednesday, four twenty four twenty four. So same. Four thirty to six thirty.
Wednesday.
Yes, my apologies.
Do you, do you, is there any interest in you guys changing the time of the meeting? So do you have to go up there twice?
We could, if you want to.
Would Bob have to be there anyway?
There in the morning anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
You're away, I'm away.
Alright, so we're good.
Yeah.
And I'll remind you next week anyways. Um, I already talked about the changes. Um, with King Swagzy, the union, uh, today we start the uh, negotiations with the union in reference to EMS. At two o'clock and uh, it's the first meeting, so it's more ground rules and and scheduling uh, out. Then it needs anything else and uh, welcome now. Um, Davis is, Davis is working on setting up some towns for the refugees meeting that we're looking at, seeing what he can do. To meet with some people, some officials up at the state that actually oversee some of this for the state of New Hampshire. And so we're seeing if we can set up a a meeting with them and with uh, with uh, Bernard being present too. So that's something that he's working on.
That will be early May specifically.
Yeah.
Just so you, so you know.
Yeah.
That doesn't conflict with any traveling on your part, right? Early May. Great.
I just know that we have the second week, we have um.
Primex.
Primex, yes.
And you two are all set for Primex, by the way.
Oh, we are.
Yeah, you're you're all booked, hotel rooms and everything.
Yeah. Homeland Security, we're also setting up a meeting with Homeland Security. Um, I, you know, right now, what we know is that we've submitted a congressional spending request. We're hoping that that goes through. Um, we were, we, we were, uh, we, we needed to change uh, our our direction a little bit within that request, but. But that we were able to uh, get that approved by Senator Traheen's people that that was allowed. Now it's just whether they choose to fund it or not, so we'll wait and see for that. Um, and if not, then Homeland Homeland Security Director, uh, Mission Buxton. Has said that he really wants to work with us to find a way to help fund. You know, you know, come up with some ideas around funding for the uh, south southwest mutual fire mutually aid. Upgrades in the infrastructure in the community, so anything we can do to help that, it's gonna be good. Um, yesterday we met with Enterprise Fleet Service Management. Um, when I say we, it was any department head that had vehicles. Because we're looking at if we need to with with thirty vehicles. In the county, do we need to go to more of a fleet management style similar to the city? And what would that look like? And do we need consistency? Everybody seems to have a system in place, but do we need a more consistent plan? And they have a plan. Um, I wanted them to bring it forward so people could hear what we're thinking about. We've also met with the fleet service director down at. Uh, the city of King and he had some great insight too. But the bottom line is that we're just trying to figure out if uh, and do our due diligence in reference to. Ensuring that whatever we're doing is consistent throughout all bodies and. And seeing if there's some ways that we could be saving money and also ensuring that our 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 vehicles are at the top level that you heard today. With uh, Jesse EMS, they had some mishaps. So this hopefully is a start of the discussion amongst those individuals to see if we can land on something that's consistent overall. So that's fleet management, um. The uh, Synophill four oh seven, which is the the bill that uh. Uh, would allow for direct billing of uh, of at least three hundred and seventy five percent over what Medicaid rates are currently. Um, is uh, gonna be talked about next week in the House. It already passed the through the Senate's committees. Um, and it's gone back to the House, it's gone to Commerce, which is led by Representative Hunt. So I'll be, I think I'm gonna be heading back up to to present up there because it's, it is critical. It's still not enough, three, it said three hundred and seventy five percent increase over what being paid currently, it's still not enough. I mean, in a lot of places, Anthem, in a lot of ways, Anthem is paying less than Medicaid rates currently. But at least this would be a step in the right direction and create more revenue. And and it's, it is, it is a hundred percent. Uh, the insurance companies are against this, but if you go online and you look at what they, what they brought in last year for their shareholders and everything else. They're not suffering, but they have a monopoly. And I'm 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 open about it because I think it's wrong, what they're doing. It's it's and I I'm hoping that uh. Representative Hunt and that and Representative Paxton, who are on the committee and others will see that. That we're we're beyond a crisis point when it comes to dealing with this situation. And we need to, they need to rectify it by, this is the step in the right direction.
We had an opportunity to chat with Hunt, remind him of the letter that talks about. If they actually. Uh, I know the three twenty five at the moment, the Senate's version doesn't include the ban of. Prohibiting balance billing, which is good. Remind him that only leverage we have is feels by clients. Or leftover balances, that if if we take that away. Everyone will be at the mercy of of these arbitrary rates set by.
Yeah.
Have either one of them represented their position?
E- either one of them?
Uh, Hunter Paxton.
Um, well. We succeeded. Year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, to defeat the prohibition of balance billing by sending a letter to John at Commerce. But I I don't, I don't know. I don't know all the extent at which we've had further conversations.
Yeah.
But.
That's where we're at, um. We should, yeah.
We have to get John more involved in where if we end up on our own financial analysis and the plan going forward and the importance of. Not prohibiting balance billing and allow us to try to get money from people to have it and to make you feel comfortable that we're not gonna. You know, we're 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 ready to recognize hardships and payment plans and that sort of thing, but. Prohibiting balance billing just leaves money behind. It's just not fair. And the the I understand, you know, at a federal level, Medicare, if you're, if you're participating. You gotta accept that assignment. But the commercial insurance companies are just abusing.
What's their position? Do they have a?
They they would love to be able to prevent balance billing because then there's nothing. That we can do. To challenge their reimbursement rates and there's no way. That we can actually get enough compensation to cover the cost of service.
No, I mean, what's their public position? What's their rationale?
Oh, then it's these greedy ambulance companies that are taking advantage of forcing people uh, in order that they can make a profit.
Last week when I was.
Literally.
Last week when I was in Concord, uh, there was an individual. And there were eighty five percent of every, probably not, ninety five percent of everybody that spoke. Was for the bills that we were supporting. That spoke. Of course, the people that spoke against it initially were uh, was uh, Anthem. And their lobbyists, and then an individual from Concord. Uh. Who uh, spoke and said, I had a friend who went to um, orthopedic, Concord Orthopedics. And when they got there, they said, this situation, you need to be in the emergency room, not at orthopedics. And so they called an ambulance and brought him a quarter of a mile down the road to Chester, uh, Che- uh, Concord Hospital. And it cost him ten thousand dollars. Now, we don't have any proof of that. And and and.
Can't possibly be.
So but but here's the, here's the kicker, when he was walking out, Anthem was thanking him for being able to take the time uh, today. You know, and then she, the real kicker was, she said, you know, I wasn't, I didn't know if you were gonna be able to make it. So they recruited this person to come up and say that, just to, you know, of course, it didn't have any effect because. This the senators that we were before passed it through. But this is the kind of stuff they do because they want us, they they're they're about saving that 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 dollar. You know, and. It's just wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, it's uh.
When it goes to the Senate, will it be passed or uh, or will it be twelve to eight?
No, it looks, it has, it had, and it came out of that committee with full support.
So I can understand why it even happens that way because. You know, if I go to the hospital for a procedure. The billing department sends me a bill of what the insurance didn't pay. They don't send me the jet.
Yeah.
So why?
Is it that way? Yeah, well, because they are, uh, they are.
What's the, what's?
There's no, well, here's the thing.
Administratively, what's the difference?
Well. At the moment, here's the thing, at the moment, there is a law that requires. The ambulance company is the baited provider. But Anthem simply refuses to follow law. They they said at a meeting, well, we got a waiver from that or something. And the Insurance Commission, the Insurance Department, doesn't enforce the law. Now, there's no, there's no explanation as to why the Insurance Committee does challenge it. So now we're introducing legislation, which is quite well received at the moment, require yet again. Commercial insurers to pay the provider directly. So. You know, maybe this time, uh. We'll have enough teeth and and enough legislative support to actually enforce it. But it's already on the books and 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 everybody dodges the question of why that's not happening now, why, why, why are they punishing? Every pre-hospital provider.
Sounds like the same situation that the utilities are using uh, for the net metering data. They're they're withholding uh, net metering data, saying that, well, we don't have the bookkeeping to do that.
It it would, it would be something like that.
Kicking is good.
Yeah, and 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 unfortunately, they had the ear of the Insurance Department and they have for years. Um, well, they're all industry people.
Well, but here's the thing too, I I had an individual to talk to me who sat on the Commerce Committee. Alright, and I'm not saying this is, I'm only repeating what this individual said to me. I don't know, this happens across the board, but he said, I sat on the Commerce because I was asked by um, the speaker at the time. To go in, they're having some some problems and they wanted me to come in and help with it. And so I sat on it for about. Eight months, that's it. And then, uh, as I said, I said on another committee. Uh, in that time. I res- I got con- I was contacted about donations from um, insurance companies.
Really?
I mean, for can't, you know, for my campaign to help with my campaign.
No kidding?
And he's like, he said, that's what's wrong. That's what's wrong. And 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 it is, it's 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 like, it's it's why every source has a stranglehold, they have. You know, it's it's because they do give monies to certain places. And and so you, when you're making a decision, you're not making it in the best interest of those people that elected you, you're making it to those. You're beholden to, in my world of thinking, if that's true, what this individual is saying.
Well, their citizen.
And there's no reason for that person to tell me otherwise.
It is, it is, it is, uh, I I. I think it's anti-competitive and and probably illegal. Um, unfortunately, there doesn't appear to be a legal remedy, only political remedy.
But they.
And 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 the only reason we know that is because we. We contacted a law firm that specializes in antitrust.
Yeah.
Lit- uh, litigation and uh. They're just big and they're powerful and they can do it and uh.
And they said, they set millions upon millions of dollars aside for these type of situations. They had, you know, the they, the same group was telling us that they've been in a situation for thirteen years. With 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 Anthem.
Yeah, on on one anti.
Once, one.
On on.
Thirteen years because they can prolong, and this is the the.
Original.
Same story that, same story. Same story we heard from others, they always say, they always, um, uh, the insurance companies, Anthem being the lead on this. Always, they always say, be in network, be in network. So you go and you negotiate, and I personally, I'll say for the, I would love to start that negotiation because. From what we understand. Unless you give into everything they want. It can, it, you know, one person had, it was for eighteen months they negotiated. And finally, he said, enough already, you you're not willing, you want me to take everything, uh, take everything that you're wanting. For yourselves and that's okay, and then I have to take, walk away with nothing and no, and it's it's again. It's it's not about the insurance companies, it's about the crumbling of our our healthcare infrastructure as a whole. And who's going to stand up and do the right thing? And say, it's it's the hospitals, it's the, it's it's the EMS services that that transport these people. It's crumbling right before our eyes. I think you did uh, something about and said that there was. Nine ambulance services over the last so many years that have closed and. There's stuff, there are so many out there right now that are just walking a fine line in Chester County. Or throughout the rest of the state that will put a burden on all of us, if and it's all about money, it's all about funding. And and we sat in a meeting where they said, it's, they don't feel it's their responsibility, taxes should be covering the these things. They said that.
Yeah, they said, listen, we don't, we don't, insurance doesn't cover when fires, fire engine shows up at your house, why would they cover when that ambulance shows up there? Well, because it's a different service.
Yeah.
It's pre-hospital care.
Right, and and that's that, that's what everybody needs and Chad has, Chad has talked about this before. The second we're on the scene, that's when the hospital's on the scene. That is when that person's giving that level of care, in that moment, when we walk through that door. And we start working with the individual that's in crisis, that's when that, and that's what we. That's when that, and that's what we bring, that's what we bring to the table. So for them, I mean, they they don't care, they. They don't care. We went to five meetings maybe. And um, up at the, and and it was all the same thing. It was all, they kept, everybody kept putting it back that we couldn't make a decision. Oh, we had, we 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 could clearly make a decision. They didn't wanna hear what we had for decisions.
All they wanted us to do was agree with the commercial insurance position. And when we, every, every single sentence that we challenged them on, they literally won't. Or. The insurance attorneys would say, well, you you know, you just got these money-grubbing private entities, they're just trying to make money. As if Anthem doesn't make money, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, look in the mirror.
But you've got the Insurance Department that is beholden to them and I don't know what. And they've been that way for decades. They've exerted that power successfully for a long time. They didn't actually, um. Representative Pumb was kind of in that field. And then all of a sudden, Chester County got into the ambulance business and he changed his tone. And he's got a little different view.
So is Anthem the only insurance company which does not pay the provider EMS services?
Uh, I don't know that, but Anthem pays less.
Decent, and now they have reduced their rates.
And so we we there, like Harvard Pilgrim, for example, perhaps others, maybe Cigna or somebody. They tend to pay more. I think the relationship is not as adversarial because. I know specifically that Harvard Pilgrim wants. Pre-hospital care to survive, they were, they need these people. And so they're always interested in reimbursing more.
And they pay directly to the provider of the service.
The one that is the one that is adamant that they're gonna pay the.
And because Anthem eclipses the volume of coverage in the after. They are the bear in the room, the elephants are more aware of the, whatever the story is. So the problem with lit- litigation that or li- legislation that says it'll be three, three twenty, three hundred and twenty-five percent of the Medicare rate. That saves people like Anthem, uh, Harvard Pilgrim a lot of money, because right now they pay a lot more. So there are gonna be winners in this. The 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 more equitable commercial carriers. Will end up paying less under this new statute. Anthem's gonna be forced to pay more. But because Anthem covers more people than all of these other commercial carriers combined. Probably be more money, but we'll get smaller reimbursements from other.
So essentially the three twenty-five evens the playing field for all insurance companies?
So those companies that used to pay more, like, like Harvard Pilgrim. Well, the town says, this is great, we don't have to pay out as much, because we're gonna pay along the same, uh, three twenty-five as anybody else. Now, the, now it'll be three hundred and twenty-five percent of the overall rate, or whatever Medicare is. And it'll be that, so to the extent that Medicare reimbursement rates increase. Then that, obviously, that our reimbursement will increase. So it it isn't terrible. It's just still, um, the Insurance Department and commercial insurers influencing reimbursement rates. Without regard to the actual cost of those services. Right, uh, and and it it gets.
So, so it's already, so it's already, is this in conference or is it just going, is it a Senate bill?
It it, there was a House bill and there's a corresponding Senate bill.
So they've gone through conference and now?
Not yet.
Is that where it is now?
It is in front of.
Well, the Senate passed something with an amendment and then sent it back to the House.
Yeah, so a little different, the Senate's seven zero octopus.
Called crossover right now. Yeah, and then, you know, then they work through, then they work through this and then. Vote on it and then if there's still some differences on things, then they go to Congress or committee. Our committee of conference, sorry, yeah, conference.
So it's no fire that that it's gone this far.
It's it's it. Absolutely unanimous.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, it's so. Right, it'll be interesting here. But, you know, but there's a few, there's multiple things that we're pushing for, one of them is direct billing. So that the bill comes directly to us, not to the individual. And the check, then there's the direct billing. And uh, three hundred and twenty-five percent increase. See the overall, so it's it's. There's a lot going on right now and all of it impacts us, but it impacts all of us. If if this goes through. Then, you know what? Uh, Troy and Fitzwilliam get a little bit more. You know, monies coming in, you know, that for the services they're doing and and the pre- it lessens the pressure. Of failure there and in Peterborough and everybody, it's not just about us. And City of King gets it too, because.
This would be important for Hunter to understand, every property taxpayer will benefit. Because every municipal ambulance service won't need the extent of subsidization that it currently does. Those revenues come up, the burden on the taxpayer goes down. And so if they wanna claim correcting some cost shifting. Or tax burden, that's a win-win. And it comes back to the argument I had, about the argument that the the the. The logic I had with John, you want it to be, you want this ambulance service to be an enterprise fund, be self-supporting. You can't then go to Concord and cut the legs out from our position to do that. By preventing balance billing and controlling reimbursement rates. You've gotta, you've gotta, you gotta let us op- operate at the next right question. But it doesn't just benefit us, it benefits everybody. I mean, I can appreciate the insurance company's fears that. With some of us getting older and staying in our homes and needing more pre-hospital care, more ambulance calls, that. That from an actuarial point of view, they could end up paying a lot more for pre-hospital care that they do now. And I guess that that's a real cost. But.
Yeah.
And can't change that.
Alright, that's what I have. Is there any old business? Any new business?
Uh, just, just, I don't know if the old businesses, the rebuttal summary.
Yeah.
So you meant that I managed to send it to you successfully, accepting all of the. Change it?
Yes, yep.
Because it it looked so, and then you overprinted, opened up and all the red stuff.
Okay, so that happened to you too, that's what happened.
I've never seen that.
Yeah, and you know you clicked everything, accepted all changes and said no more tracking and then. So I sent it to you, I was like, I know, I've gone through this a million times, I know I accepted all track.
Open it myself.
There it is.
What about in the conclusion? The fact that we haven't heard anything from.
Because we, by law, we can't, we'll never hear anything.
Well, I mean, but. No one has heard anything. I mean, if if there was, if there was any truth in this. Complaint, then. What does the Treasury Department do?
The the one thing we don't know, which I I I'm pretty sure we know. Is if they reached out to the initial complainants, which is, it's technically possible that they have. I doubt it personally speaking. Uh, talking about the rebuttal here and Terry was suggesting putting at the end that we haven't heard from Treasury, but.
Well, I mean. If if someone makes a legitimate complaint. That there was wrongdoing or improprieties of some sort. The Treasury Department, if they find that there was. Don't they do something?
That's true.
As David, David did some research and called. Call somebody to acquire. And they said, well, we we can't let you know anything, you're never gonna know.
We would be the subject of any sanction, so if there's any sanction, we'd know.
Right, here's the other side of it though. They've got real, they've got tens of thousands of complaints like this. Against people that really did obviously squander. Buying islands and fancy cars and that sort of thing.
Lamborghini's the big one.
So the fact that it doesn't rise to that level.
Means they've got a volume that they can't address and you may never know one way or the other.
It also means, it also means that this complaint does not rise to the level of of serious wrongdoing. If their priority, if their priority is to take care of the of the of the real need, the red need. Then this isn't.
I I don't disagree, I I just think we don't know, we don't know that, we're only kind of pursuing it to have to prioritize it somehow. We don't, we we haven't been able to discern what the derogatory process is in terms of prioritizing.
Okay, so the original complaint was signed by the union and the chief.
No, the chief.
And Tyler. Delusio. Okay, so since the chief is no longer here, is that?
Well, he signed as a citizen.
And the other thing is, is it's it's a. Tyler Boucher, um, is former employee of Delusio, current employee of Rescue League. Who then writes a complaint that has actually a financial interest in us. Faltering or being blamed because then Ref Ewing can come in and 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 it just, it just. The prob- the 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 good thing about this is that it it's. Goes through and very clearly states that, um, the client that was written was poorly written. It was personal. It wasn't factual in nature. And um. And so what we've put up here is it not personal, it's factual in nature and um. And it's the truth and and that's the response that that we wanna have out there for this this document, so. You know, we don't have to discuss it today, if you wanna take it and read it and we can bring it back. Um, and and that's fine, you know, I would like to have this so that when we have our meetings with other people. And I feel like if we, if this comes up or or something, you know, that we have this this tool moving forward. Um, but I think the bottom line is that. Um, the finding says that there are so many inaccuracies in here. And so many untruths that you you don't, you you just need to, we just, we just clearly should. Say that and why that is. And and if Treasury wants, they can have a document that's longer than this, there's more to go over if we wanted to. I know. We all feel the same way, we feel the same way, we were, we were, we were attacked. Unrightly so, with a lot of misinformation. And and um, and we we just moved forward, but the bottom line is, is that. Everything said that we said we were going to do, we're doing. And so we're, we're in, we're in a good place and. And we'll wait to see if 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 anything ever comes of this, I, there's.
I'll be out of office by the time the charges, buddy, you won't.
But I know, I mean, they personally attacked you, they personally attacked others.
Everybody except Bob.
Well, he, no, he brought it up today that he got, he got attacked. And then she apologized.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, are we certain there's no collusion there? What are you saying?
Investigate an investigation. Point a special prosecutor.
Okay, good, you know, but I understand the plane that this is on here. But what I don't think. A lot of people don't understand is that there is the reality plane. Of 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 loose talk and just reputation.
Is this still being recorded?
Yeah, and I hope it is. Because this was an, this was a, an isolated political attack. To. And and I hope, and I hope that. When uh, when uh. Mister Hansel runs for a higher office, that someone points out. The. The turmoil that he seems to leave behind everywhere he goes. And everything he does, everything from medic to with EMS and some other things that that, you know. I'd just like to, like to know, where do I go to get my name back? Where do I go?
I think I would say Ocean State.
Ocean's still job lot, yeah.
Because I, I don't know.
Probably have some old, old reputations there that.
I I guess honestly, I don't know how to, uh, I mean, the words that have been said have been said and they're out there. The voices like that, those ill-informed voices have been dramatically reduced. Except for Bob Strachan. But I don't know how you undo the echoes of past.
But I do. I was, I I think. I think. Yeah, we can go all out and go, go and they were wrong and did it, but the work that you've been doing. Pertaining to community power and lining up communities and having those people. Those residents now, being able to get the lowest cost for their power, you know, I mean, that in itself says everything. Again, the work that we're doing with EMS in the eighteen to nineteen communities that we're in, we're in every community, one way or the other, whether it's. Into facility transfers, wheelchair services, or nine-one-ones, but with nine-one-ones, we're in. Literally eighteen and nineteen communities, if you count City of King and the five communities they have. You know, we're having a huge impact here and and the leadership that's going on at at EMS, they're doing a great job of. Getting it, you know, meeting the needs uh, when when they're called. So that itself, and 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 it goes on and on, the county has a footprint in in this region. And a lot, and I think that's what we need to do, we, you know, whether it's really, whether we look at. You know, bringing, you know, helping bring workers here to refugees, whatever the work that we do. Connected Families New Hampshire, going into communities where kids are at risk of out of district, district placement. Those are the stories that we need to tell, those are the things that we need. This, the the EMS is just one small piece, one department of fourteen. In the community and there's a lot of good stuff going on in our communities. In the county, you know, because and and because of us and we talked about it this morning, some other things that we're doing that we're gonna be helping communities with today. That we can't talk about because it was a non-public, but there's, there's, you know, these are things that are really. That's what we need to talk about and that's why I want us to start telling our story a hundred times more so than what we've done in the past, just because. You know, we're out there, people count on us, look to us. To help them make a difference in their, in their community, whether it's a nonprofit, whether it's some type of event, whatever it may be, if we can help them. It's helping the community as a whole. That's how I, you know, I I've gotta, you know, at the end of the day, people know who we are. And they know that we didn't attack, we didn't do anything, we told the truth. And and there was a lot of um. Miscreants that were in very harsh ways that were thrown at us and there's still some people. Out there that, you know, will still bring those type of things up here and there. They're wrong, they're just plain simple, they're wrong and it's not true. And we're doing, we're doing some incredible, incredible things. And it's being recognized or the, or the Manana Collaborative wouldn't say that. Or or Jamie Trowbridge from Yankee Publishing wouldn't be like, you know, just like, we can't, we'll never be able to thank the county enough. Or Cody Morrison coming being saying, I don't believe we'd be here if we hadn't gotten that money that you gave us. That's medic, you know, that's, you know, you know, it's, or another untold story, Manana Broadband. You know, we partnered with with South West Regional Planning Commission to bring Manana Broadband together. Now, I look to people like, uh, Brad Roscoe in Chesterfield as being the real stars. If they went out and tried to, they figured out a way to really make it happen, but we just still helped facilitate that conversation. And now we went from one of the worst connected uh, counties to now one of the best connected counties, we still have work to do. And we got legislation passed through Senator Con, so we just need to keep doing wins. Like that and telling our stories about it when it happens and we've got, we've got, you know. Um, Dave is here to to help us get things out, I mean, he and I talk constantly after hours. Like I'll see something, they say, can you put this out, can you do, and we get it out right away. So we're gonna continue doing that.
You know, even typically, it's only that five hundred. So that's true.
Okay, um. Okay, um. I noticed in the minutes, we talked about the the Community Power embargo. Well, I can't help myself. Um I'm meeting with Surrey on the thirteenth of May.
Do you want me to make an alteration to the meeting? No, I'm serious. Good for you though, that's great, getting it out to as many people as possible, helping as many people as possible.
One of the things that, you know, when we go into these towns, if we're going into a town. That does, isn't part of community power, maybe they belong to some other, or maybe they don't have made a decision about anything yet. You should be there. And we should, with with twenty minutes we have, we hit the buzzer real hard. I talk about the the different departments we have, and then I turn it off and say, but we just wanna bring you, you know, something that could save you, you know. You know, introduction to the community power and something to think about, because currently, and this is what we're paying. What about, what do you, what do you guys think? You know, so.
Unfortunately, it's being pushed out, the next wave is being pushed out until October.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's just.
But that's okay, as long as they know it's coming. And a lot of these people might be in contracts that they have to work through anyways, but at least now they know where they commit, if they choose to. That's all we wanna do is if we don't wanna, we don't wanna force anybody's hand, we just wanna give them the information so they can make a decision. And the cool thing, if if this, if if this selectmen are willing to do it, they don't have to bring in. They could just do it, and that's the legislation. They can just have two public hearings so people can learn about it and and then make the vote. They don't have to put a warrant article, they don't have to do all this other stuff. So did did Elsted have their thing?
Well, Elsted uh wants, wants it on their town warrant. Uh to get a uh a consensus of the, of the voters before they make a decision. There is, there's one selectman who's adamant about not being. And he doesn't think the town should make a momentous decision like that for everybody.
Which one's that, Joe or is it Matt?
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's just political philosophy.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm kind of at a loss. You know, to get into his mind of what he thinks the Board of Selectmen does.
Yeah.
But, you know, that that, anyway, they uh, they have agreed to pass out all of our cards and to encourage. Uh members of the community to join on their own.
Yeah.
Um and they're going to put it on the next, the next year's um town warrant.
Okay. So that's what we have.
Well, it did clear up one, one thing that would be with sort of um. I don't know if it was a glitch or if it was another. Liberty. Um. Wasn't cooperating with um with us. On on periphery towns. Uh as far as, as far as um. Allowing them to join us, because they, whatever, that we were able to straighten that out. So now uh Liberty customers can now join. It's clear.
Yeah.
Something came out of the air.
Well, that's good. I mean, the net metering thing is, then, you know, if P U C could get that.
Why don't they just eliminate that cap?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, it is one of the biggest red-faced harries out there.
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing that it does is protect the interest, the financial interest. Of people who are invested in fossil fuels. It does nothing for the consumer.
Yeah. I did talk to uh Randy Filio yesterday. He is Chair of Facilities for S A U twenty, uh the King School District. And I I said to him, what what do you guys have? And he said, you know what, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. Let me get back to you on it. I said, alright, I just, it's just an opportunity, that's all. I mean. Why not? You know, you guys have some savings and some money, it's some funding. So. Um alright, so consent agenda item. Uh vote to accept the weekly manifest in minutes of April third, twenty twenty-four.
To move.
Second, alright, any changes? Seeing none. Commissioner England, Commissioner Clark. Alright, any changes to the calendar? No, except for nine thirty next week.
Nine thirty next week, that's it.
Up at the nursing room.
Instantly.
We'll be thinking about it.
Okay.
Uh, General Scotty.
Seven twenty in the morning.
You wanna honk on your way back?
I will, yes.
In case my alarm doesn't work.
Yeah. You wait in next week to come and somebody just outside your house is going.
It's the squeaky horn of the Muzak Meow.
Oh. Um. Just uh we can, we can adjourn, um if we have a motion.
So move.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner England.
Hi.
Commissioner Park, we are adjourned. Um, so Terry, you have, you, uh Sky has done a book and you've done a book?
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yeah, well, she, she just came up with her latest uh book.
Okay.